We'll call this meeting to order. And sorry for the slight delays, you got here late. Sorry that you missed a very nice reception we had from county employees who have served ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and thirty years respectively. And we had an exception today and we did that at 5:30 and so it ran us just a little bit late. Again, thanks to them for all they have done and contributed. We make amends, we appreciate their time and their service. This meeting is officially in session. We'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting. And we're glad you chose to came this way. As far as announcements, I'll start over here with Chester Jones. Do you have any announcements to make? Mr. Higgins, do you have anything to say?
I would make a couple of announcements, just to let the media know and the public know that we, our board members, will be meeting out of Macon County twice this month. And all five of us will be attending, I think, Jack, was that right?
I'm not sure if everybody's going to be attending. I think most of them are, but I can't just walk into Raleigh on the 23rd.
We're going to Asheville. We're going to attend a training that's called Essential County Government. It's a training session that the county commissioners put on by the state. And we'll, I think, we're all five of you attending that. And then also on the nineteenth of January, at nine o'clock a.m., at Macon County SCC campus, we're going to be having a board retreat of sorts. We will be meeting to sort of see where we are halfway through the year as far as our finances and those kind of things, and to set some goals as a board for the coming year. So that is open and public, that is a public hearing. So we'll publicly announce that, being nine a.m., SCC. Then on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of January, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has a legislative goals conference, which we always participate in, the county's tradition to participate in. And we and county commissioners have the opportunity to come together and decide what we collectively as county commissioners across the state want to ask our legislators to do or not do or undo. So that's been a process going on for a while, and this will sort of be the culmination of that process, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of January. And that's the session at Resher Park near here. So that's all the announcements. Thank you.
I just want to say, if somebody's in a hospital or something, that's what we tell you, send flowers and usually send a thank you card back to your company back in the office. Instead of sending one, I thought I would just say, thank the board commissioners for your support, your concern, and the prayers and the flowers. A lot of recent people out in the hospital, appreciate that very much. And my wife appreciates it. I would also mention that our financial rovers have been seen tonight. She is sick. She called me earlier this morning and she doesn't feel very well at all, so she won't be here tonight. The last thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is that Senator Davis is sponsoring a meeting with the local elected county commissioners and managers from his district. That's going to be held at ten o'clock on Tuesday, the fifteenth, at the community facilities building, it's for elected officials from the central county areas. If you can go to that, please let me know so we can get ahead there, so we can compensate everybody. So we sent a note out, and they don't want the chairman or the manager, but hopefully they'll pass on the bill terms of course. If you play there at ten o'clock on the fifteenth, we'll be able to. Senator Davis is going to have a roundtable, so he could have an opportunity. This does not necessarily take place of the legislative goals, but at least would probably give him some idea of what particular issues we have here in this district as we're placing county government and how the state does and does not do what it needs to accomplish for our issues. So that's available, we'll be off.
Thanks, Jim. Just keep thinking. Okay, we'll stand together and we're going to observe the votes. Mr. Chairman. Thank you. My best wishes to Hagan, to you, and to the police, to the legions.
The legions, the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for its saints, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a public hearing tonight. Go ahead and call in. It's in session, we're having a public hearing. We have a Chester, so I read this resolution paragraph this time. Yeah, I think that's fine. We have a resolution in front of us, the county of Macon, North Carolina, declaring for the intent. Okay, this is to consider the installment financing contract for improvements to Highland School. And we will be considering this contract as soon as the hearing is completed. So I'd ask county manager, Mr. Foreman, to give us the background on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, and certainly the public is well aware of, discussions recently concerning renovation of the Highland School, one point five million dollar renovation project that can be paid for with finance, but qualified for the school, QZAP funds, which is basically interest-free money. So in order to do that, we have to have potential financing, and we'll get reimbursement back from the feds. And so the debt interest rate that the county has to pay for that money will zero, this looks like right now. In order to do that, handle that financing, that one point five million dollars for that school renovation, it's necessary that the county hold a public hearing to give citizens a chance to comment on their proposed borrowing from the county. So the board met in December and scheduled a public hearing tonight at eight o'clock to take any further comment to reconsider in the installment purchase contract in principle of a loan that exceeds one point five million dollars for improvements to the Highland School. And at this point in time, that is what it is. The maximum amount of money will be one point five million dollars, that will cover everything, from architectural fees, design fees, all the way through completion of the renovation project, including the payments. So it's going to be a total amount of the amount of the loan. That's still go for the state government commission, the final approval, but we're going to ensure there's not a problem with that. So tonight's public hearing is slated for the public comment regarding the financing of this project. Time is critical.
We also need to inform the public that it will be real property utilized as security for this indebtedness. And that property is property currently owned by the local school board, described in DPOK eight dash six, page three eleven, on the office of registered deeds for Macon County. As part of this transaction, so that financing can take place, there will be an interlocal agreement entered into between the county and the school board, whereby the county, county school board will be conveying that property to the county. The county will currently utilize that property for security for this loan, not to exceed one point five million dollars that we spoke about. And as soon as we get an interlocal agreement, there will be a leaseback of those facilities for during the term of the loan from the county to the school board for use of that building. And the loan on the school is paid off, and the property will be reconveyed back to the school board from the county. The term of the loan is contemplated at this point in time to fifteen years as, Mr. Foreman. Interest rate, once the QZAP assistance is received, the net interest cost is zero percent.
I bet Dr. Jim Duncan is here tonight, who's our student dean of schools. And we'd like to also recognize, we know that he's two of our school members, I think that's Tom Gary Shields, come in a while ago, and Lou Steppen, she's our representative from Highland. So welcome. And we're glad you're here. Duncan, I'd recognize you for any comments that you might be able to make at this time for clarification, what the lady's for, or whatever you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman, members of the county commission, county manager, and attorney. It's a pleasure to say to you, I think you're going to get a good deal. I think this is a great project. It's very much needed in that particular school. A lot of the things that will be done in terms of renovation, primarily if anybody is familiar with the Highland School, it will be mainly the elementary school. As you walk into the building and turn to the left, you see the library there, and then all of the building, back to the left of that going down to the huge invasion, it's an area we're contemplating doing the renovation. Include ceiling, include floors, and include an update to all of the air-conditioning, heating units and this type of thing, and then that area. We hope, obviously, to have that done over a period of three to three and a half months and be able to occupy when school starts. The possibility of obtaining this type of money has certainly made possible by the generosity of Highland's country club and citizens there, because there is a requirement for there to be a local act. And that has been secured, paid by other commissioners and school board members, working diligently to work on that. But that's just part of it, and it's part of being a good citizen, and part of helping out. Yes, it is interest-free money, and that might grant a lower rate for it up to far exceeding value, yes, and there's no doubt that anybody owns it. The money is available, you've used it before, and it complements this tradition on, at least that I know of, forty-seven million dollars' worth of buildings in all in our community that have really enhanced the ability of young people to build a school in a great environment. And this will just further that environment there by putting that school there. It's going to include, like I say, the floors, it's going to include the windows, and the painting of the walls, all of the new things that need to be done in terms of renovating the building. If you happen to answer any questions about it, and there are some representatives from the Highland School here and community that you can collaborate about, and I'm sure the board's opinion will be, if you happen to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions the commissioner might have about the renovation? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Shields, do you have any comments to add?
No, no. I would just say thank you to the commissioners for what you've done to have to bring you in for the school, and to continue to support the education and our teachers and students in our building. Just a thank you for what you've done.
That information we just heard, we'll consider that information in regards to the information regarding the process. And thank you, Dr. Duncan. We also have Ashley Koppich. I only have three people that have signed up to speak, that's Dr. Duncan, Ashley Koppich, and Jennifer Forster. There's others who would like to speak, we certainly recognize you for the pleasure of the hearing. But Ashley, we recognize you.
Thank you. I am a teacher at Highland School, kindergarten in the elementary room that we were talking about, those school renovations going forward. And I just want to say that on behalf of the fact that we staff that we're thrilled with the possibility that we might be getting this renovation. Just, you mentioned the windows and the floors. My classroom, I have glue that comes up through the floors, and you know, every time we take a break, they redo the floor, but the glue comes right back through. That's wonderful. We all have air conditioning units in our windows that are surrounded by duct tape and plastic bags, because, and the air still comes in. They are also very loud and we can't teach over them. So we have to turn the air on when the students are not in the room, or when we're not giving direct instruction, and then they have to be turned off when it's time to talk to the kids or have direct instruction. And the kindergarten's direct instruction is almost all the time, so it ends up being caught in my room a lot. But I would like to just say, thank you, and that this possibility of this school renovations, I think, will be wonderful for the future of our school and for the future of our students. Thanks.
Thank you, Ashley. We recognize that Jennifer Forster, and also to speak to the house.
Well, thank you for giving it up for me to speak. I have a parent with three children at our school, and I'm also a product of Highland School, if you wish. I moved here when I was in the sixth grade, so it's like eighty-eight maybe. But I think most of what Ashley said is what I was going to speak on this evening as well. I volunteer in that class room, which is also kindergarten classrooms, and it's opposite, actually, but the air conditioning unit has to be turned off often, you know, so the teacher can teach. And when the kids are in the floor and the glue is coming up, you know, part of it happened there. I know the teacher has a hose in the floor, so that doesn't happen. I also know just from my husband, what he does, a couple of years ago, the school was inspected, and there was some black mold and things like that, found in the ceiling there, and had to replace it all with that insulation and stuff, and the ceiling isn't that, isn't that. But I recently read an article in the paper about schools saving costs and making schools energy efficient, and you know, who would give different awards based on their energy costs? And I just think that, you know, giving the renovations could change that tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Those are the ones that I have on the list that signed up to speak. I know there are several other residents from Highland here who may be interested in speaking. If anybody else would like to speak at this time, so we'd recognize you. Post, you're not complaining. Pretty kind of person, quite. Have a turn. Chester. We need a, you think?
Going back in the year, six years ago, under Jackson, Jack Orton, and other members, I was the only member of that board at that time, who made a committee for those schools in Macon County. And when the chairman was also with the school board, they had a master plan. And that master plan has sort of got lost somewhere, I don't know, equipment, equipment, pulled it back out, and this is one of the largest parts of that master plan. And one of them was the soccer field, thanks to this, you're on the back, you're on the left, and some other folks in Highland, Mr. Bryce McGurty, instrumental in that. Those things have been, this work needs to be done in Highland School, like three to a hundred percent. It will bring that school and the rest of the school, and with this renovation, to my knowledge, to Manhattan, all of our schools will be touched, and give our children the best of chance to have an active educational role to play. So just wanted that. For other members of this board that wasn't here, these things just don't happen. It's been planned for several years, so I just want to say that I certainly support this whole project.
Can I make some comments?
Yeah, I'd like to. I'd like to first of all, thank all of you that took the time to come out here, especially you teachers. And I saw firsthand, when I met with Commissioner Tate, the problems that you had. We get an opportunity, I'd like to make a motion on this, but I'll let Commissioner Tate do it. And I thank you, Jim, for all you do to speak. And I hope that you can express your thoughts.
Do you have comments, gentlemen? I'll echo what these guys are saying, this is part of a long-range thing, and I was glad to be a part of several years ago, renovate our schools and get them up to where they nearly are today, but we're not finished until we do. So I wholeheartedly support this too. We'd like to thank Mr. Tate, especially, a lot of hard work on his part, not only to sort of pushing us, and everybody else involved, getting match money, and I don't know if you guys know, but Jim Tate, that's a good guy. Any other comments? If not, I would have a motion to close the hearing. We have a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close, I'll say.
We have a motion and a second. In discussion, all the favor of closing the hearing, since I was saying aye.
Aye.
Close. And that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sure county attorney, we have any, any other resolutions or documentation to consider?
With respect to the documentation of the actual contract itself, Mr. Chairman, we had the opportunity to speak with Ronnie Council, Blackfoot himself, and Lori Hall, and it is premature for us to bring an actual contract before we do. We actually have to get proposals from various legislators, and those we're not getting in the series. That cannot be necessarily.
So you're saying we don't need you?
There'll be no, there'll be no resolution approving the contract tonight. We do have a reimbursement resolution. We can take that up at a later time, after you've had tickets to this.
Okay, so we take that tonight. All right. Thank you very much. So we're done with that. The next item, we have a public comment period, and this is a period of time that every, all our regular meetings, we have a public comment period. This is where any citizen can speak about anything that they choose to speak. We have one person that has signed up and not for that, and that's Mr. Charlie Cowan. Charlie, we recognize you.
I'm Charlie Cowan, county commissioner, county manager, and staff. I don't want to come here sounding like a broken record. I've been before here over a year ago, and I'm on a similar subject. Y'all can remember very recently when they had this terrible thing happening, Connecticut of that shooting. But if you also remember, immediately after that shooting, there was a tremendous upheaval of organization, of comments, of shutdown of weapons, there was a movement started. We need a similar movement today in this nation to start back manufacturing. Now, many of the people who campaigned in this recent election spoke about manufacturing, kind of quietly. But what we need to realize, and why is it so important to this county, but I'm going to tell you why it's important to this county. If you realize it or not, the cash flow in this county is so supported by previous earnings of people who are retired, people who have investments, but the point is, is gross national product, that's manufacturing goods. If you do not have goods that create money, the money that is in existence, little by slow, is going to evaporate. Now, what can we do about it? We can do this. If you believe in it, if you believe in it, we could make a resolution. Previously, when I spoke, Ronnie Deal, I spoke to him, and I appreciate it. He took a comment down to Raleigh about it, I thank you for that. But we need to get back on board. We need to start in our county, get a resolution, take it on to the next county, to the next county, to the next town, to the next town, to the next state. Do you understand, if enough people scream loud enough, we're going to stop this here stagnation by EPA, and get people working back. We need seven, eight, nine, ten dollar an hour people working, because they will have payroll deductions that will support social security. Where's the money going to come to support social security, the nation taxes? I don't think I need to speak anymore. You get the message. If you'll do something, I really appreciate it. The nation will appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie, as always. Very much. Did anyone else wish to speak to the board, address the board on any issue? If not, we'll move on to the adjustments and approval of the agenda. Chester, we can add this resolution here for action on the Highland project.
That is a reimbursement, the chairman, which will allow for the county.
Is it already there? Very good. Any other adjustments?
Chairman, you recall, some contracts were authorized, and we proceed with soliciting vehicles on the way to the investment plan, that's been paid for a bunch of hundred percent health department funds, and we're, we're, especially down to bid, the committee men do have a low bid recommendation tonight for consideration. Renovation project will take about sixty days complete, so we can't start that until we're authorized for a low bid. So we'd like to add, definitely a consideration, perhaps around COVID nine eight, somewhere before or after the COVID help, the election policies. Rucker is here, and Mr. Ritter, they are taking a look at what I'm designing here, with the renovation, and I just want to put that on the agenda.
It's okay, gentlemen, let's take that item A1, the QZAP, Rucker's here to speak to it, so we'll make that item A1, and we'll call that dental office renovation.
And road business.
And road business, item A1.
Mr. Chairman, we also, we have on the agenda, as we always do, a closed session if necessary. If it's necessary, and the board decides to consider a closed session, or earning private privilege and profit, that's a.
You would make a note on number thirteen, you scratched the word, if necessary. If you have closed sessions, you, you, you have private privilege. Any other items to add? That's all I have to say. Is there a board member having items to add?
Presentations, I think, C, I understand, fifteen seconds.
We'll make item eight, C, Commissioner Tate, planning board update. Commissioner Tate, do you think to add?
I believe the Department of Health has a resolution released, we're already in space on the.
Yes, yes. Will he put that in the new business? Let's make that item ten, C. I believe that's Tommy Jee. Okay. Any other items that you need to add to the agenda?
We'll approve the agenda, Joe.
We have a motion, second by Commissioner Tate, to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion about that? If not, all the papers, signatures, I'm saying aye. Close. That motion passes. That is your agenda. The reports and presentations, we have Sheriff Holland here. I think all of us understand, several issues happen nationally in discussion, that certainly a lot of them have locally, those issues, so we recognize Sheriff Holland this time.
Okay, well, thank you. First of all, I've talked to some of you about doing a very quick scenario, and it'll just take a couple of minutes. I'd like to do a scenario just prior to my presentation. And if Commissioner Tate, Commissioner Hagan, could go with Lieutenant Tranmore.
Commissioner, have arrested, more waiting? What you going to do?
We should have gone. They're fine by cars. And push that door, I know we can't have it shut, we push it on one shut. Legally, we're not allowed. Legally, we're not allowed. What I want to do is, I want to have a scenario here, and I want everybody to know that this is just a scenario. You're going to see, you're going to see two firearms, you're going to see individuals involved in a scenario here. Nobody's going to be really shooting. I always say this, I know it's not legal to carry concealed into a county commissioners' meeting, but I want to tell anybody that may be carrying concealed, this is a scenario. So, if you are carrying concealed weapons, this is a scenario. Thank you, we're kidding. Everybody laughs, but I'm serious. Sometimes we come in here and they do have guns. We don't search everybody that comes in, so. So, I want you all to know that, this is a scenario. Ms. Robb, if you would come up here. You're going to sit right here in this chair for right now. And then, we'll get Clay Bryce and they'll bring that. Okay, show them.
Just so everybody knows, this is an air assault. This is one of my main weapons. It is very safe, it's not loaded, it can't load it. I said it was air assault. However, this is a real gun, but I completely fire mechanism out of the state strictly for tonight's playing scenario, if you notice, it's a trigger in it. This gun cannot fire, it's a green off.
And no bullets.
And no bullets. Everybody, everybody play.
Take a little longer. Ms. Robb, you'll lay right here. Stephanie, you get in position. You'll lay right here, we're dead. Put your legs, put your legs right here. Right there. Hold on. Danny, bring the first one. The individual that's coming in is going to have three seconds to respond. And when I say stop, they're supposed to stop.
Tell them to knock.
Yep. And they knock, there's nothing going to action. Maybe they're a little slow there. There's probably cookies on there.
Did you get them that plain?
Yep. Stand ground, don't you move! If you move, I'll shoot you! Stand on the ground, stand on the ground now! Don't move, don't move! Get down, get down!
Please!
All right. You go ahead and have a seat, give me that gun.
Oh, now, I might not do that, don't let it go.
He shot.
I was shot.
Hurry up. As you noticed, how many of you would have shot him that quick? Everybody raise your hand, who would have shot him?
Oh, right.
Next person's coming in, hopefully we're kind of ready.
I think he took down, left it out, it's like, eh.
They're, they're teachers. They are teachers in the school who have been given guns and allowed to carry guns in schools, so you have teachers that are reacting for this. Okay, come in.
Get on the ground now, don't move, I'll shoot you! Stand on the ground, get down! Get down on the ground now! Get down now! Get down on the ground, get out! Get out!
Stop. All right, go ahead and have a seat, give me that gun. Now, why did you not shoot him?
Because I didn't know if he was a policeman, or a, somebody bad, or a, I don't know.
Okay.
I didn't know if he was on the bad.
Scenario, this is, this is what the scenario, oh, you can get up. The scenario was this. Individuals coming into the, to the room here read a scenario when we handed it to them. The scenario was, they were teachers, and they've left their class coming to respond to the noises of an active shooter. When they responded and they entered this room, they thought this, this gentleman that was actually a parent who had come to pick up his child, he picked up his child, and as he entered into the school, he came and got into a confrontation with a lady, a pregnant lady, that ended up just shooting two individuals. He witnessed it, so he's very going nuts and screaming, not recognizing anybody's coming in. He is, he's holding a gun after he wrestled away from his suspect, so the active shooter was it. I can't speak on behalf of the commissioners, they can say that for themselves. I'm against teachers having guns in our schools, there's a lot of talk about that. And I just wanted to run that scenario by you. We need our teachers to be teachers, and we need our law enforcement officers to be law enforcement. And we want to run that scenario by you. So, thanks for letting us do that now, and say what I said.
The day exactly of the horrendous tragedy, Sandy Hook, the sheriff called a meeting with the liaison department, the county manager downtown. I attended along with Dr. Duncan, Dr. Baldwin, Sherman Breedlove, Vice Chairman of the School Board Cabe, and the sheriff, and Detective Danny Barnes was also there, who's been with our SRO since beginning, has now been in charge of the SRO program. So, we did have a meeting, we talked about several different things, and we thought, and the sheriff and I have discussed it, we wanted to bring some things we talked about to this meeting tonight. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, that this will be passed on to these on committee, that we can be fixed with, right? And so, with that, the sheriff has a presentation, and I also have asked a good friend of all in the room, Mr. Gary Shields, to come tonight. If you don't know, Mr. Shields, it's been several years ago, but I know for a fact that, and I contacted Shields, that he was, he was on a commission for school safety, and really, and basically, they wrote the book. I think I'm, if I'm speaking out of turn, Mr. Shields, you just tell me. But that commission was started writing the book for school safety, so I've asked for Gary to come and give his input tonight to better inform us, and in the days following the tragedy, I know that everybody is sitting around this table, and the one standing in front of us got numerous, numerous calls from concerned parents, as they should be, because there's nothing more precious than protecting our children. So, with that, the sheriff gave a report on not only what we talked about, but some other things, as liaison, the sheriff's department, that he and I had talked about.
I'm just saying, as everybody noted, Ronnie is our liaison to the sheriff department, and it's part of his role, is to communicate effectively with the sheriff, and to decide when we need information from this, and I think that's what's happened.
Like Commissioner Bill said, it was actually the Monday following the Connecticut incident, that, you know, we were all being bombarded by information and by people having concerns, and so, we got together as a group and talked about several issues. And one of the biggest things that we learned out of, out of that conversation is, there was some, some questions that needed to be answered, that we needed to find those answers out. And so, for this last couple of weeks, we're working on getting back together and being able to answer some of those questions. But even our own agencies and the schools found some issues that they wanted to look into and address. So, what I want to do is basically talk about the past, present, and future, and I'll try to be brief. Basically, having the SRO program began before we ever had SROs, a grant was written through the sheriff's office. It was back in 2001. The grants were written, here, it's just one page. Grant was written, and then in July of 2001, it was approved in the budget. And as you can see from the Franklin Press article, it was well supported. Since that time, that was two SROs. And since that time, it was started, eventually that grant ran out, which they all run out, but it gave us an opportunity to initiate a program within our school system because we didn't have one. And then, one of the reasons for that is because there was issues that were going on. It may not have been high in numbers, but you had issues. In order to be a proactive agency, a proactive school, a proactive community, we have implemented SRO program. Since that time, we have sought fit, as the sheriff's office, to implement additional SROs with the support of our school system, and we have a tremendous working relationship. And I, I credit that by not only our previous county commissioners that have sat, sat here, but also because of the good working relationship between the officer of the school, the school system, they're positive things. So, we have a very good open door policy with each other. What we were able to do is, we eliminated positions because of funding. We all fell into hard times, budget crunches, and understood that. But I, as a sheriff, felt that there was a priority that needed to be taken, we needed more assistance, more SROs in our school system. So, what we ended up doing, with the support of the commissioners, of course, and the county manager's office, is implemented two more SROs by eliminating other positions. Last year, if you remember, it was the last year, the year before, we eliminated one position in order to create that SRO. So, that was, that made us to be able to have four positions. Franklin High School has grown, we used to have one there, it's grown. And so, I think just prior to Mr. Shields retiring, we were able to, with his support, we were able to go ahead and put that other position in that school. I know other schools were wanting it, and would have liked to have had it, but we had to put it there. That's where the most, you know, the issues were dealing with, and one officer could not deal with that. So, we had a policy, we implemented a policy, that an SRO has to be there at all times. You can't do that before a person. So, if you have two, when a man leaves to go to court, leaves to go to court, the policy makes it so the master's office also be a jail, you still have another SRO. So, basically, that's how it began. Training, we train all the time, there's always training that's going on, we train with the school system. We have different opportunities where we're able to do training as an SRO within the school system, educate not only the students on law enforcement issues or legal issues, but also the staff. SROs go into the classrooms on a routine basis. Of course, a lot of things changed pre-Columbine, you know, from, from pre-Columbine to now, even pre-Sandy, Sandy Hook. We do train for the issue going into the school system. We, we don't do the training where it's, the students are involved, and there's a lot of reasons why we don't do that. One of those reasons is, we don't want people to really know what response law enforcement is going to do on them, so, so we don't actually do a mock drill where you've got students, teachers, and law enforcement involved. You don't want the, if you're going to meet in a certain area, you don't want the bad guy to know what this is where we're going to sit, so I'll sit up here and watch out, pick them off as they come down. Future, I see a continued increase in the presence in all schools. What we're doing now, should have put that under present, what we're doing now, since Sandy Hook, sense of a lot of the concerns, a lot of calls, a lot of talk, just to give people some, some at ease feeling. We've been having our officers go several times a day to the various schools here in the area. That's going really well. Being very receptive by the teachers. Increased training for our officers and our SROs will take place, increased in addition to prior. We're going to do an increase this year. The joint meetings that we had, we're going to continue to do that, and have more of them, so once a year, once after, some have somewhere. Random security checks. I, I went to the superintendent and spoke with him, where is he at? Has he left already? Oh, there he is. I went to the superintendent and spoke with him and let him know that what we wanted to do was go to the schools at random, take officers that the teachers and the faculty was not familiar with, just like some Joe Blow off the street, and try to make entry into that school casually, like they were looking for somebody, and see if they get stopped. I'm happy to report, and you can breathe now, because I can tell you what happened. We, we did go to five different schools, five out of 10 schools. Every single school, including my daughter's school, was my, two of my officers at various times were stopped by faculty, staff, janitors. Somebody in that school immediately went to them as they went down the hallway, wanted to know who they were, what they were doing there, and asked them to go to the front desk and sign in. So, that was the, congratulate your staff for doing that. With the support of the school system, we're going to continue to do that. Not to embarrass anybody, I probably wouldn't have come and said anything tonight about it, if they wouldn't have done that. But we're not out to embarrass them, we're out to fix them. We're going to meet with that committee that we talked about earlier, and we're going to continue to come up with ideas and different things. Me and the superintendent talked about some issues today that we're going to look into and speak about that with the committee. My opinion is that we should have school resource officers in every school. It's not a response to the Connecticut incident, but because of the purpose they serve. I've said my entire career, ever since I was a juvenile officer, ever since I've been sheriff, that we're even in each of our schools. I know, and you know, and everybody sitting in here knows, that we've been in bad crunch times, bad budget times. Can we make that happen instantly? Absolutely not. But I'm a direct result of positive influences in my life because of my SROs as I was growing up. I know Detective Corbin will tell you stories about, as he was growing up. He's a cop today because of an officer that worked in his school with the DARE program. One of the officers that was involved in the scenario, he is an officer today, and partly because of one of the officers that he befriended when he was growing up. There's a lot of purposes as to what an SRO does. It's not an armed guard standing at the front door to harass the kids as they come in. They're role models, they're people to help with, we go into classes, we do teachings, talk about drugs, talk about firearms, they talk about a wide variety of things, I could go on and on. My purpose tonight is to make it clear that the possibility of SROs in all of our schools needs to be discussed. That's why we brought it to the school board two weeks ago. It needs to be discussed. Not just by the sheriff, but by each member of each board that represent our school system and the students that we serve. I know we're in bad budget times, and we're struggling economically, and I totally understand that. I've made cuts in order to create SROs. And I welcome anyone in the room, new commissioners, feel free to come and go over my budget. Most, all of the commissioners have done that, and we've already thought that we welcome you as a new commissioner, to come, and we can show you where we made cuts. I take it, I take it seriously, the safety of our community, and I appreciate the support that this board has given me. But as I said, the reason that we're doing this is just a, it needs to be talked about. I know that you all have had people talk to you, and as a board, publicly and privately, we need to have further discussions. One thing that I would encourage us to do from this point forward is, if any new schools are built, we need to come up with a, with an agreement, or, everybody needs to understand that before a new school opens up, we need to have an SRO in that school. That needs to be discussed during that building process, and I would encourage that. We need a plan to have SROs in each of the schools, that's for me, and that's the Highlands. I can give you, and I'm not going to do that tonight, because I feel like I'm talking too much, and you guys are wishing I'd sit down, but I can give you numerous scenarios from schools that we've reacted and we've responded to during emergency traffic, from your elementary schools to your high schools. The day before the Connecticut shooting, we had a principal request, an SRO, request an officer. Before that SRO could get there was just a matter of less than 10 minutes. That, that principal and a staff member was injured, was assaulted, injured, and your principal was out of school for a little while. Luckily, because of the holiday break, he's, he's back now, and able to be mended. Third grade, a lot of people don't think that in an elementary school that we need one. We had an incident just a few months ago where a third grader brought two guns to school. That night, an SRO was contacted. That SRO initiated an investigation and learned that he did in fact bring a pellet gun to school and an aerosol gun. Of course, it's not a 9 millimeter or 40 caliber, but it is a pellet gun, it's a serious thing. The reason the kid told another parent was because he said, tomorrow, I'm bringing my daddy's other gun. So, when the SRO went to the school, talked to the, talked to- So when the SRO went to the school, talked to the, talked to the parent, the kid doesn't have access to it. My SRO asked, can I see it? And when they went to that gun, there was a 40 caliber sitting about two and a half feet off of the floor. A lot of people would say, well, why wasn't the parent charged? The parent wasn't charged because they did not get that gun, so you could prove access to that gun. But a disaster was, or a serious situation was stopped. I can name you numerous cases. I'm not going to do that tonight. If you ever want to sit down and talk with me about that, I'd be happy to, and also my SROs.
Sheriff, before you say that, I want you to bring Dick DiBarro's family. For those of you who don't know, Dick DiBarro, she's still active with SROs, even though that's not her entitled position as of now. But I'd like for you to talk to the board too about SROs and what you saw in the schools and your involvement.
The mission of the Macon County Sheriff's Office School Resource Program is obviously a proactive approach to law enforcement. At times, certain situations require a reactive approach, but our mission is always to be proactive. That's why we're out dealing with the students, the faculty. We have a close working relationship with everybody that works on that school campus and attends that school. It's very important to maintain that, that relationship. I've always said that it was a mutual respect and trust that you gain from being on school campus every day. It's something that can't be gained from an officer just coming out on the street that you've never seen before. It's from working with each other every day. The children get to know you, students are comfortable with you, and you'll be surprised what they would report. And one of the incidents that the sheriff just referred to of the third grader, when I interviewed every one of those students, third grade students that had seen those weapons, not one of them, the entire school day, told anybody at that school. However, as soon as I, they sat down with me, I didn't tell them why I was there. I asked them if they knew why I was there. They told me immediately. They said, yes, we know why you're here. I have no doubt that if there had been an SRO in that school, in that elementary school, that they would have told somebody. A lot quicker than three o'clock in the afternoon. We all know that if that had been a real weapon or if that, nobody had paid for, where that even, and the real one was raw, we would stand up. It's real hard, the sheriff goes and talks about this, and many people ask you. It's hard to say what you've prevented. It's real hard to say. Once something happens, you know, you can say, well, now how did that happen? And everybody's going to question it. It's real hard to always know what you've prevented through the years. We only know from the incidents that we've documented, you know, where they possibly could have gone. And that's the only, only way. I do know that through the years, all the SROs have very close working relationship. And we do train very hard, and from the day, from the minute we get on campus and the time we leave, and most of the times, still when you're home at night, you're getting phone calls about what may happen, you know, what's going to happen the next day, or information to either prevent an assault, you know, to prevent something from happening. Those calls come in constantly. So you're always thinking of the safety of the campus and those individuals that we're there to protect. That's our main goal. And I think that's what the sheriff's statement was. We want teachers to be able to teach and law enforcement to be there, you know, to prevent any of these instances and to react in case someone does.
Thank you for what you do. Mr. Chairman, we met and Dr. Duncan to certainly speak to you. Along with that, you know, this is going to be, it is very expensive, SROs, putting schools. We know that when we're getting the budget, we can certainly have that discussion. But before that, there are several things you think you can do. And thanks to cooperation of all the school boards, and Dr. Duncan, Dr. Baldwin, some things that we can all work together on. It may cost a few dollars, and the sheriff, and the sheriff and I have had this same discussion, so.
That's nothing. You go on that, on that, Sheriff, that'd be fine. Which, you talk about the one program?
The different, all the different, we talked about having doors you can lock on the inside. Make sure all the schools have the doors you can lock on the inside. And I think she was going to speak to some of those things. And some things that they kind of think the new schools have that capability, but some of our schools do not.
And that's one of the things that me and the superintendent talked about. And I kind of don't want to talk about the school system without him getting up and speaking if you want to. But, but he talked about looking at some things too and going before, for his board or some issues that he had concerns with, like the locks.
And it's going to be a penalty between this board, the school board, and the citizens of our community. We all know that. And because if, you know, whatever happened here, we certainly don't think so. We certainly pray that it does not. But these folks that that community, and they can hear what happened there, and so. And this is the 40th time it's happened. So it's, it's going to be a wire on top of that.
One of the things that I, I talked at the school board meeting, and I've talked to a couple of you about it, and I hope we can work something out someday. We had a program where the officers would go and have lunch with their kids. And, you know, a lot of the officers enjoy going to lunch with the kids, but they also enjoy going to lunch with their friends and, or their coworkers. And so what we did, we had an initiative where, with, working with the school system, where the officers' lunches were free. If they would go to the school and have lunch with the students, it would be free. And it's, it's hard for me to send an officer to go, to send Danny Burrows to go to East Franklin to have lunch. Tell them that you have, you have to go there. It's your lunch hour. You have to go there. We didn't pay for anyone. It's hard for me to do that. And so we've talked with the school board and the commissioners about the possibility, which could not be expensive at all, is that being able to pay for those lunches when they do that at school. Because the school system, the way I understand it, is lunchrooms have to pay for themselves. And anytime you, if they give away a lunch for an officer, it's going to be within that money that they've lost. So I would hope that that would be something that you all would discuss together about in the next summer, this year, the possibility.
That's something you and I talked about. That, that's a very simple, very inexpensive thing. I would be very much in favor of a small line item, and we designated that for the school system. I think that did come as a request, Dr. Duncan, from you guys, to be outside the regular budget. That's something, now, we're going to have a legislative, a laser meeting with the school. Me and our laser arms group, we're going to have a meeting next week.
There's a time, the chairman would go ahead and affirm that, though. Dr. Duncan approached on this case Tuesday. And I think the chairman would say, so that we bought it, and also we have lots of our things. So if that's okay, we'll go ahead and set that for time.
I'm always hesitant for this board to pass some resolution or budget item that didn't come from schools. The sheriff elected by the people to make the school decisions. So that lunch, the sheriff Holliday, we were just talking about, there's some simple, inexpensive things we can do this side of hiring SROs. We can move in positive direction, that's enough. I can't think of any that we can do better than possible. That's another, you know, sheriff, if you want to have lunch, at least have that presence, have that familiarity there. What great idea. What do we decide on the 15th? Is there a way to verify that? Or is that at 5:30 on the 15th, the location should be? And, Mr. Chairman, I have asked Mr. Shields to come, as he was a part of this, just to give out this board and the public a little review of what, of what the schools have now. And I think everybody's going to take a closer notice of that, talking with Dr. Duncan. So, Mr. Shields, if you would come and tell us a little bit about the programs you were part of and what we have now, how we're, how the school board hoped to work on that.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the live encounter.
You got it. Thank you. I'll say thank you to the sheriff too. He also, he took me out and told me, the sheriff only wanted to drop him. So he knows where I am.
And if you also notice, he sat on the other side.
But I do appreciate you for working today.
Thank you. And I want to thank my, my staff, who are also certified instructors for our agency. Who participated, Stephanie Pellicer is a domestic violence officer, and Clay Brice, who is the first sergeant over by patrol unit. And, Miss Robb, thank you for your action. You did great. And thank you.
A lot of those are my former students. I'll say thank you to them too. Sheriff Holliday, Dr. Duncan, from the past and the present and the future. I just want to kind of share with you what we, what happened in the past, where we are now. And I don't know what's going to hold for the future, but I'm sure it's out there. Looking around this room, a lot of you attended high school prior to 1990. You attended school, high school prior to 1998. At that time, I was a school administrator, and I felt like we operated under the policy, everything was just rules. You had school rules prior to 1998. And then as a principal, we operated under the theory of, we brought a student to the office, we talked to them, go and send no more. Had they, because they had drugs or whatever it may be, where you were taking from them, hey, you don't need to be doing this, we gave them that, that talk. Then we'd say, go and send no more. But, but prior to that, after that, 1998, 97, things began to get serious in schools. There's a lot of things happening, gangs, a lot of drugs going on. We had a lot of violence that is flowing from the community into our schools. And I can always remember Chairman Forkman, now, he was my chairman at one time, was always talking about the fringes, that if we were going to receive the fringe one these days, as long as they stay out here, you can kind of operate under the norms of your, of your community mores. But now, he always warned me, that fringe is coming toward the center. Well, that, that fringe did come toward the center in a lot of different ways. And after, on school board, in 19, March 24th, 1998, they developed a strategic plan that adopted for that night and approved it. And I want to share with you some of the things of the comprehensive plan. And they had six objectives, and I believe four goals that they had on that strategic plan. Then the, out of that strategic plan came a comprehensive plan that we had to put together. And this is, we were being moved by the state, the governor's, crime commission, all this movement. We didn't have a choice. We had to, we had to do these things. And it was a good thing because it was getting crazy in some of our schools. I said a while ago, you used to have school rules prior to, in the 90s. You'd get, you'd get a handbook and say, school rules. You go and look at a handbook today, very, very few rules in the book. It's all law. It's all, all about law now, school law. Then what happened was they took that comprehensive plan, and we said, okay, a group of us, the principal stuff, but we knew that Franklin High School was the largest school. I'll say this in front of you, and I said it in front of Sheriff Holliday. You don't secure Franklin High School, but just the way it is. You, it's, you've got five in, five out. You just do the best you can. So what we, what we agreed upon is that Franklin High School was to develop the kind of the first plan, the draft plan. And I want to share you some of that. Then the others, the smaller schools looked at, and we'd all model after the Franklin High School plan. Richard Baldwin was there, Mr. McDonald, that worked in Jackson County. He worked at the same time in Macon County, Larry McDonald, he was a facilitator with us. And, but each school, and I can only speak to Franklin High School, and I'm assuming the other schools could say that. We had a red book made for teachers. The reason it was red is you walked into classroom, you could see this. This is in my office. I didn't have to look through all those black books and white books. I looked through the red book. This was my crisis management plan. I'm not going to be specific about some of the things, but we went through this process about five years. Remodeling, modeling, remodeling, those type of things. So we find ten of the ones at Franklin High School that were adopted from Macon County, a crisis management plan. We brought in assessing teams to look at Franklin High School. How about that? And I looked at this first, I, two pages of, you have good business. You're, you're, you are really in a, you have very little security. And all the things, school resource officers, cameras, things we are today, so much has been done. Even for paving our, our student parking lot, that was one of the things on this list here. Bus routes, a lot of things. But there's two pages of, and that's what we've worked towards. But here are some of the things that's in this. Every teacher at Franklin High School had a crisis management plan. It was red. The, what we wanted to make sure that they understood was the definition of a crisis management plan, what was the definition of a crisis. And we first got together, we identified 12 areas that we wanted to focus on. And that goes everything from how to handle alcohol, illegal drugs, assaults, bomb threats, had numerous bomb threats at that time. Inclement weather, hazardous waste, fire, death, weapons of danger. We had 12 of those things. We knew everybody had those 12, and these were the most common ones we had to deal with. And the procedures with that, and I won't go into the details, but that's, that's up to the teachers we trained in that and the principal, those type of things. But there are procedures. It goes with all three of those. Now, some schools today, I retired in 2010, some schools today have added to those 12. And that's a good thing. The first thing we all felt like, we all need to be on the same page about emergency codes. You know, what is green, what is blue, what is red, what do those mean? I'm not going to share that with you, but we know in our schools, if somebody called for code blue, code green, code red, how we are to respond. And then you say, well, who's going to respond? But what you have here, you have a, a total, total school-based management team. At Franklin High School, you've got, I think, seven buildings. You have a management team that knows this book up and down, what to do in case of emergency. Then you have, you break it down in what's called, your, your, your school grounds are broken down into certain areas. And that's in the book here. Also, within this Franklin High School team, which is past that other team, you have specialty teams. You, you've got, you've got to have people who know about CPR, first aid. But you've got to look around at your faculty and say, who are these people? You've got people that's in your fire department, on your rescues, and you've got nurses. You've got a number of people on your staff that you can incorporate to make your stu, make your school into a specialty team, along with the school resource officer. We had crisis kits. This book here has your plan of your total school campus. It has your, your buildings, each building that you can look at here. So if, when they respond, and they come to the office there, I can show them exactly what building it is, where they are, what building to go to. Then I can show them what the diagram is within that building. And it's in this book here. I just want to say thank you for all the time that you put in this. But I didn't want you to think, the public to think, that we're, that we're working in a vacuum. We do have a plan, but you don't go out and get and tell us all what the plan is, do you? But we do have a plan. And the only thing that I would say regarding the plan, I think it's really good. I think we just need to knock the dust off of it and go back and look at it again. Now, we went from 1998, we went from the end of the 20th, out of the 20th century into the 21st. I'm not sure we put totally into the 21st because it's hard to. It's technology, so we need to go back in and look to see what we can use now as a technology advantage to protect our students. Dylan, appreciate what you do. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate you.
I've got to go back.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing. Our liaison, we definitely be moving back to this board going out here. And on some things that we can do, a lot of the school board, and see how you all feel about it. We can look at this, there's sort of a low cost, that SRO would be part of the discussion too, having a decision for this board and a lot of the operations of the school. So we appreciate the working relationship, Dr. Duncan. And we look forward to working together. We think that it was important to have this information for the parents who not only call me, but a lot of people in the room. Call me and Robb at the same time, remember. But, but, Dr. Duncan, if you'd like to speak to any of you, you're welcome.
Just a quick comment. It's a community organization type of thing. We all have to be aware of it. To say it can't happen here, something we don't get to say. We need to be prepared, if something does happen. You don't ever know those kinds of things. It's not being taken lightly, and a great, a real relief to me to know that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. And sometimes, parents get into dealings. But we, in obedience, on the side of safety, I think we're doing well. And so your constituency- And so your constituents are, why can't you get into that school? They got it all. So, well, I'm glad that's happening. Now, for some reason, you need to talk to the superintendent, the principal about it, and you need to make time to do that. But the plans are in place. Rich Shields is right. I'm sure they had collected some docs, but they're updating them now. We have, we do have things in place, public, we have a communication system by telephone that every school can immediately contact or send a message to their parents. And that's in place. We updated and upgraded that issue. Every school has that. So if you've got a call and say we're doing a drill, then that's what we want it to be. But we know in today's environment, that young people sometimes react on cell phones and other kinds of things, the things that aren't really fair. We have to, we have to combat the possibility, but we also have to say there's a true part of it. And we just ask you and the public and everybody else to stay alert, come to school board, and my office, and sheriff's office, if something does happen to the school, then I have no reason to not report it, as I could be of a possible event, and to take action when that's needed. And I think we have. We do have a responsibility to provide education, and so are we are. We don't carry guns, we can't lock them up, we don't have a jail. And so we'd have to deal with it, and the parents, because education, we need to be sure we're serious to be able to help the education, and we'll do that. So appreciate the permission. We'll work on some things, and our, some things with the war situation and stuff like that. I did check in three schools today, and one of the great things I found out is that many of our schools have a situation where the teachers will not have to go outside, and that's where they lock the door, but they go out in the hall, and shooting's going on, they don't very likely to go in. But we do have, in most of our schools, in the new schools, we've got these things in mind. And the last issue I remind you to mention about, is we have rolling class with 52 of them. Here we got the transport of about 2,400 students. And so school door safety is something we need to look at, in terms of cameras on buses and those kinds of things. We'll be addressing in our budget time, but our budget comes to you. And so we all, we all talk about it together and say what we need to do, and that, but that's an area of, of my personal concern, in that we need to be able to identify and need in these situations, that are on those buses, at some point in the day. There's something, there are a man, there are a man of school bus, that kill three of their kids, just like that. They don't pay any attention. School bus driver did what they're supposed to do before he entered the school. The school presumably reported to the sheriff, or highway patrol office, and hoping that person would have reminded, very similar about that, and carry what they may have run by their students. Thank you for your attention. I know we'll be working on it.
Just one thing, Ms. Chairman, one aspect that I mentioned is the mental health, and the mental health providers for our school, we still have two providers, we still keep sustaining cuts for our mental health, 40 million in the last two years. We'll be meeting, we'll have a meeting on February 1st and 2nd, and it's concerning you on the topic. They have now changed the rules about how you classify the kids, and what levels it would cost money to cost. But we do still have jacks of psychology, along with athletes, and Paul Lifford does a wonderful job in handling that. The mental health expectancy is still very important, and that's still only part of the discussion. We will have a two-day meeting on that, February 1st and 2nd, with spoken meteors, and I'll be representing not only our county, but several others, and we'll talk about the mental health expectancy.
Sheriff, Mr. Hall mentioned weapons in school. You have a teacher here, a teacher that murdered, this teacher here will give her life to protect her children, this teacher won't take a life to protect her children.
Those things, those things, it's a psychological thing, when you start taking someone's life. We can talk about stuff, but when it comes down to it, when you see that person die, it's a different thing. You just, you give your life to those kids, but I'm not sure you can take a life. I'm sure, yes, you would.
Thank you all so much.
Mr. Corwin, I'd like to say something from the mouth of a six-year-old boy, my grandson. My grandson watched it on TV, he's six-year-old, and he goes to Iowa State, and he knew what happened. The day after, he came to my shop, and he came near to my shop, and he says, Papa, he said, I felt good at school today. I felt safe at school today, because when I got to school this morning, Robbie had a deputy there, and I saw that patrol car, and I saw that deputy. So if you think it's just an adult situation, I'm speaking for a six-year-old boy. He went to school without all his heart, dreading to go to school. But when he saw Robbie's deputy in that patrol car sitting at Iowa, he came to shop that afternoon, he said, I knew I was safe. I just want to share that with you.
Thank you, Dan.
We're going to continue that conversation, we're going to continue that conversation at our meeting. Thank you.
How many, how many SRO officers are on the sheriff's?
Sheriff?
Robbie.
Robbie. We have, we have four SROs on our payroll, right, the county payroll?
Correct.
And we have the Highlands furnished, Highlands PD furnished one for Highlands.
We did furnish one, but the assistant, the new chief went in, who was our first SRO, went into office, and his assistant chief retired. So instead of having one of my officers go up there, he called and wanted me to support the town Highlands Police Department to have an SRO within their agency, so they traded out. We supported that.
So how many more would you need that time?
It would take, it would take six more officers to have full-time SRO.
Where are the ones that you have now?
I would prefer you not publish that. I mean, to be honest with you, I don't want to name what schools, I mean, I know some of the papers have, but I really don't want to say what schools have a cop if they don't. People figure it out anyway, but I'd rather not say.
You said it was that six, including Highlands, or six of them?
No, not including Highlands. We don't have to worry about covering Highlands, because they have an officer there.
But if you did, it'd be something.
Correct. Well, and, yeah, correct.
Sheriff Paul would say that this has been a little bit strong on this, but this isn't a bad indication. Solid, firm, and thoughtful, to be safe. I know compared to a lot of places, a lot of schools, we've got a good set of programs compared to a lot. But it's the same way like if you've got a system set up at the jail, and if somebody comes to visit a, I guess, inmate, where they pick a phone up, and they're with the thing, I guess that's blood and flesh, right? You know, only a thought, I'd have thought about once that a school had taken up, and also done this, something about something. If they was visitors, they need to consider something like that, for the person that comes there, whatever, to take a few weeks there, to take a phone up, to speak to somebody. This would be one of the things that might be, sure, a problem. And it's just something I want to say, like I say, I'm sure everybody out here has got something in mind also, but we're all, we're looking to save our children, as you well know, I've got to tell you.
And I don't want to portray that, that I think that SROs, if you're our school's going to prevent a tragedy from happening, that's not a, that's not going to prevent it happening. It's a possibility that they could prevent it, but it's one thing that I can guarantee, is that if somebody comes to a school where there's an SRO who has bad intentions, then I can guarantee you, if they have an officer that's going to respond to them immediately and take the bullet that they want to. We can put fences around, we can put armed guards at each corner of the school, and towers, and we're still not going to be able to guarantee 100 percent. Having an officer at that school, working with those kids, and having an officer there at that school, is going to, is going to reduce the response time that you're going to have to walk. And that is, that is my goal as well. And I'm not here to not say I'm asking for six SROs tomorrow, but we're committed to that. I appreciate you coming here to bring that to my attention. Thanks.
Thanks, Sheriff Paul.
Thanks, Sheriff. We've, thank you, David DeBirr, thank you.
We take a little extra time with this, but we felt like it was important to have discussion, and having that, we appreciate that. We've got about an hour and a half, gentlemen, I would ask for a recess, a short recess, if you would, if you'd like, to get a script, and we'll come back with the idea, the agenda.